Scott, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, fine.
Perfect. Good deal. The fun begins.
Yeah, I decided I'm writing music called, my first song is gonna be an ode to my barber. Yeah, it's kinda like going back to my hippie days, I guess.
Yeah.
There's a new guy.
There's a new guy.
Chad.
Hi, how are you?
You got your audio on, Chad?
I do.
Okay, good. You guys get your names right. I got...
You can go to the upper right-hand corner of your screen.
Yeah.
Click on the three dots and you can see rename.
Oh, yeah, three dots there, too.
Yeah, you do. Move your mouse up to the right-hand side.
Now you're getting picky. Rename. Better? You're happy now?
That's it.
Some things in life have never changed.
I'll get you a paper cutout for next meeting.
There we go. That's more better.
Hey, everybody.
That's good.
Yeah, if Hazel Baker figures out that renaming will be pretty entertaining.
Oh, Knoc's looking good. He's never looked better.
Now, how come I'm only seeing, like, Tom, I see you in full screen. Is there something I need to do?
So if you go up to the very top right, John, this is Pat. It said, probably says speaker view for you or something like that. There's a gallery.
Gallery view. I'm sorry. Yep, got it.
Glad you could join us, Sue, on time.
Now, it's because I never received Pat before.
We had a little trouble planning commission.
Hey, four minutes in, and I came in. Thank you, Tom. I wouldn't have gotten there without you.
Listen, I was sorry to butt into your meeting earlier today. I was trying to set up my Zoom.
We were practicing to see what amount of agenda we wanted to be able to show on the screen.
Oh, okay.
And also, I usually do this from my home on just the laptop, but today I'm in the office because I was worried a little bit about the wind and didn't want it not be here at the beginning.
There's also a way, and I gotta figure out what that is, to get in, to change. You can put a screen, like, something in the background that...
I think it's in general. If you step all the way down to the bottom left, I think you get up in that choices.
I'm looking. I'm not seeing it.
Video settings?
I just get stopped.
Yeah, virtual background.
That arrow up next to stop video. Try that one.
Arrow up.
See, stop video on the bottom.
Oh, video settings, yeah.
View the virtual background.
Usually you wanna have something pretty blank in the background.
Uh, yeah, that ain't gonna work. Okay. Back to none.
It doesn't have to be a blue or a green screen, but it does need to be pretty blah.
You can download your own and put them there.
Oh, I know. That's, I did that. That's what you were looking at was... Maui.
Oh, you can pick a color, too. There we go. See the palm trees?
I do see the palm trees.
I like that. That's kinda cool.
Mm-hmm.
Huh, I like that.
So who are we waiting on?
Our city manager would be nice.
Hazel Baker. Beckwith.
Beckwith. We just need five of us, so we got one, two, three. I know, Jimmy, Jim, are you on video yet? Are your video on?
Jim shows no video on, but he also doesn't have a microphone for me to unmute him.
No microphone for Jim? Oh, my God, this is heaven. We're gonna do this for the rest of our lives.
Well, Pat, I'm assuming you got confirmation by everybody else, though? On email?
The only person I didn't get confirmation from at this point, I think, was Randall Hazel Baker.
Okay.
Everybody else has, and I just admitted three more, so...
They're all running in at the same time here.
I've talked Beckwith right now, and Jim.
Keith, you've been unmuted.
Hey.
Travis, you're unmuted.
Yay.
Emily, you're unmuted.
Travis.
Hey. Did everybody hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Hi.
Looking for Beckwith and Jim. There's Beckwith.
Mike, you're unmuted.
Okay, I'm here. Don't see him a picture, though.
You may have to click the start.
Don't complain.
Uh, Sheriff, where do I gotta hit?
Tom, do I see palm trees behind you?
There we go.
We're looking for, oh, we got one, two...
Travis, yes, you do.
You're waiting for Jim to get his video on.
Travis, I think he's down there at the J.C. Park, it looks like.
Oh, must be.
You know, with friends.
Can you see public? Pat, is there any public phoned in?
There are no publics yet. Everybody you see is everybody you get.
Okay, who's Rebecca Koster?
She is our closed captioning gal.
Okay. And quarter iPhone, you know who that is?
That's Joe Scheid.
Okay. So we're trying to get Jim on video is the only issue we got right now, right?
Well, video and audio for Jim is not gonna be much. He can't even sign you right now.
Oh, my God. Hey, Jimmy?
We've got video, but Jim, you're gonna have to mess with your microphone a little bit. We're not seeing you.
You hear us, Jim?
There we go.
There you go.
You're unmuted, Jim.
Do you hear me with us?
Yep.
Okay. Now, wait one more minute.
Looks like we've got our first caller coming in now.
Okay. Uh, before we start, to help Sue Heath, when, as you guys remember, we have to have a roll call vote on every motion, no matter what it is. She would appreciate it if whoever makes the motion and whoever supports the motion would say, motion, I moved to approve, you know, Mike Beckwith, I moved to support Travis, so she knows who's making the motion and who's supporting it, please.
Okay.
Uh, would help her out. That being said, we'll call the meeting to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Rissman.
President.
Councilmember Mackin.
President.
Councilmember Knoc.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Here.
Councilmember Petskill.
Here.
Councilmember Out.
Here.
Member Hazel Baker. I don't see Councilmember Hazel.
No.
And Mayor Kramer.
Here. Uh, we look to for a motion to please excuse Councilman Hazel Baker.
So moved. Petskill said that.
Support Beckwith.
Well, motion and support. Would the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Councilmember Rissman.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mackin.
Yes.
Councilmember Knoc.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Yes.
Councilmember Petskill.
Yes.
Councilmember...
Was that again? Me? Yes.
And Mayor Kramer.
Yes, motion carried. First item on the agenda is a recommendation from Councilmember Knoc regarding appointment of second ward councilperson. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. A few weeks back, after the unexpected resignation of Councilmember Second Ward, Chris Pierce, I was tasked by Council, the rest of you, to make a recommendation. We advertised it out to the public. I put it out on my own Facebook page, and I spoke to some individuals that were actually recommended by even other councilmembers to contact. Um, so I did my due diligence, and I have made my, I do have a recommendation to make to you, and that is for Chad Johnson to fill the vacant second ward councilmember seat. I believe that Mr. Johnson would make a excellent representative for the second ward based on his knowledge, his experience, and his love for the city of Coldwater. So that is my recommendation.
That would be a motion, too, Jim?
I will make that as a motion.
Do we have support?
Or Scott House?
Okay, we have a motion and we have support. Any other comments? If not, would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Mackin.
Yes.
Councilmember Knoc.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Yes.
Councilmember Petskill.
Yes.
Councilmember Out.
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman. Councilmember Rissman.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes, motion carried. Uh, now I believe the clerk will administer the oath of office to Chad.
Yes. So Chad, if you would raise your right hand. If I can find. This is for the state of Michigan, the county of Branch, and the city of Coldwater. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully discharge the duty of the city of Coldwater councilmember for the second ward according to the best of my ability. Will you?
Yes.
All right, if you will sign that form which I sent to you and scan it and send it back to me, we will be on board, and...
Hey, welcome, Chad. We're going to our regular meeting now. Chad, just as point of information, we have a consent agenda that are matters that we consider routine. We take them in one motion unless somebody at the council or somebody in the audience wants it, pulled off the consent agenda for further explanation or clarification. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have our minutes of March 9th. We have our closed session minutes of March 9th. We have our electronic special minutes of March 31st. We have the Planning Commission's special meeting of February 27th. We have our financial reports for February of 2020, and we have a memo of me, from me regarding a variety of board reappointments. I believe they're all reappointments. Well, those are the five items in our consent agenda. Would anyone on council like anything removed for discussion?
Ma- Mayor, if I may? If I may?
Yes.
Um, I can share the agenda, any item that the board would like, but I won't share unless someone would like to share.
Okay.
If there's something you would like to state at the time that you would like it, and we'll put that up.
Okay, understood. Anyone on council want anything removed? Is there anyone in the public online that would like to, if you raise your hand, you can comment, have something removed from the consent agenda? See nothing, Pat?
Nice. I do have one person on here, but they have not raised their hand. I would suggest that we give a little bit of time as the YouTube Live is a little delayed. That would give support the chance to sync in there, and I'll let you know when we hit that.
Yeah, and I'm sure somebody picked up. I'm a little out of sync, too. We have a public comments before the consent agenda, which I skipped over, so we don't have a motion yet for our consent agenda, so we'll backtrack a bit. Uh, we have a spot on our agenda now for public comments, and we have one at the end of the meeting. Anyone has phoned in, would like to make a public comments, they may do so now?
Anybody?
Megan, Megan Angel was just to say something.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that we advise the caller how to raise his hand in case he or she has not read the instructions.
Gotcha. So if you do want to comment or ask a question, the phone number is 888-475-4499. The meeting ID number is 104540704. There is no participant ID, so you will just be asked to hit the pound sign. If you want to ask a question, please press star nine on your keypad. That will let us know that you want to speak. And I did put that out on YouTube. It is currently displaying on the YouTube channel now, as well as Coldwater Channel 61. I have not got any other requests for admittance. I don't have any questions from the one caller that's on the phone.
Okay, we will come back to public comments at the end of the meeting. Seeing none now, we will then look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Motion to approve, Travis.
To support Knoc.
Okay, we have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call vote.
Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Knoc.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Yes.
Councilmember Petskill.
Yes.
Councilmember House.
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman. Councilmember Mackin.
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer.
Yes, motion carried. Bills and accounts. Keith and Tom, I see we have three different amounts of periods. Is that correct?
So there are, there were two runs, and then the total number is at the top, so that represents a total number.
So you're asking us to approve $121,402 based on the two subtotals below?
Correct. We didn't have a meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions for Tom or Keith on the bills? Chad, everything is posted online for us or the public to look at before the meeting by line item, so every detail is on the agenda ahead of the meeting for anyone to look at.
Yes, sir. I actually printed it up and looked over.
And I said, I'm trusting we can make a motion to approve A and B in one motion?
Correct.
Megan, okay. So we look for a motion to pay our bills in the amount of $121,402.86?
Motion approved. House.
Second. Beckwith.
We have a motion, we have support. Any other questions? If not, would the clerk please take this vote?
Councilmember Knoc.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Yes.
Councilmember Petskill.
Yes.
Councilmember House.
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman. Councilmember Mackin.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer.
Yes. Pretty exciting so far, isn't it, Chad? Next, we have our city manager report. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, everyone. Welcome back. First, I'd like to ask chiefs in director to mute themselves, at least on my end. It looks like it's picking up noise and lighting up as it hears that, so with that, I want to recognize, though, our employees that are working in the police and fire departments. They continue to perform their duties, and they're continuing to do so in a safe manner. They're, they're all... in a safe manner. They're, they're all healthy at this point and we're maintaining regular shift schedules and continue with our full staffing. Relative to other staffing, the city and the BPU are maintaining essential functions. The offices, the various facilities are closed as they have been now for three weeks. But we continue to operate within the office with a limited staff. And we also continue to operate on the BPU side with limited staff. DMS has been out a couple of times to pick up yard waste and do some potholes and they'll do so again this week. And they are just working individually at this time and doing those things that are only necessary to main our facility, maintain our facilities. Given the amount of time that we have currently, we're asking everyone to participate in the 2020 census. They can do so even if they've not received a a postcard or letter. You can log on at 2020census.gov and it'll ask you for your name and your address and prompt you from there. It takes about 10 minutes. It's 10 question survey and so everyone that participates is only going to be that much better for the city as it's as population is based on our state funding as well as federal funding opportunities. Community events update. You've already heard that the car show and swap meet is, has since been canceled. I'd like to notify today that the that the was notified by Jerry Ford today that the plan is to Memorial Day ceremonies and that that will be worked out with WTVB to conduct a a program that morning on Memorial Day in recognition of Memorial Day. So there'll be a radio broadcast in lieu of a parade or cemetery service. And then we're waiting to hear back from the other representatives of the River Through Time and then the city itself will make a decision. We're trying to give ourselves a little more time, though with Strawberry Fest, the Strawberry Fest does attract thousands of people downtown, so we'll have to evaluate that as we get towards the end of this month and early May. Made reference to the fact that we are continuing to do yard waste pickup. It is something that is permitted under the governor's executive order. So residents can put out their yard bags, their paper bags, and we will collect those on a weekly basis. There again, with limited staff, it may not be always on Monday and depending on how much is out there, we may, we may coordinate that with other work that can be done by a couple of people coming in on a day or two's notice. With the limited staff, we are not conducting code enforcement with the exception of the exception of complaints. But we do ask that residents abide by those things that are gonna, that are addressed by code enforcement, whether it be long grass or parking in the front yard or junk and that type of thing. And so we just ask their cooperation in that aspect. And so that's the, that culminates my report at this time.
Questions for Keith? Randall has joined us.
Yes, I'm here.
Apologize for the phone in the background.
So we will not be issuing tickets for tall grass then Keith?
Well, I didn't, I didn't say that, but, but there is a period of time here where, you know, we'll, we'll evaluate it as police staff are available and as office staff are available, but we know that we haven't reached, while I've mowed my, for the first time over the weekend, not everyone has reached that point, so we'll just kind of play it by ear over the next couple of weeks.
But you're aware that lawn services are not allowed to go mow, so it's hard if someone is, doesn't have their own equipment. You're gonna have to deal with that, right, eventually?
Right, we'll, we'll take it under okay, consideration. Try to be, try to be lenient.
Question for Keith?
I do have one department. You do have
She, is Emily cutting out? Can you guys hear her?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't, I don't know.
That's better.
Good. Um, for the rec department, I know there are some spring leagues, both adult and youth that are to be started soon. Um, I think both before the new home order is lifted or shortly after, has decisions been made about stuff for the recreation department?
At this time, anything that existed up to April 30th has been canceled. But we continue to do registrations for the baseball softball seasons and we'll evaluate there at May 1st or the following week to see where we're at.
Okay.
And we've had all employees at this point are being paid. No one has been laid off, Keith?
Correct, on the city side. There are a couple of part-time, as I understand it, there are a couple of part-time people on the BPU side. They're not currently, they were furloughed.
And you have a system for if I'm a clerical person, somebody next to me is staying home and then I'm working, or you're rotating them in, so there's balance? Same thing with DMS. How are you making that fair, just out of curiosity?
Yep, the, for example, the neighborhood services staff are rotating and the DMS are coming in in different shifts or in groups, so that there's a minimum number at any one time. And, and their assignments are meant to be where they can work independently, that they're not congregating in a single location.
Anyone else have questions for Keith?
Keith? Are they doing any type of road repair? Just because I've noticed, I was told about a few and I looked at a few. There's some pretty serious potholes forming out there with the recent rain. Are they, are they able to take care of any of that or is that all completely shut down?
Nope, the plan is to come out this week and do pothole repairs as part of their limited duties, so that is something that's very much permitted under the executive order and it's something that, that a single person with a truck and old patch can do independently as well. So today was rain or at least the forecast of rain. So the intent is to get out there, get this week to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Keith? If not, we would as usual look for a motion to approve the city manager report.
So moved, Randall.
Support, Petsko.
We have a motion, we have support. All in favor, would you please respond when the clerk takes the roll call vote? I almost missed that one.
Councilmember Backwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember House?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Number nine, a letter from Keith regarding M dot local bridge program for South Clay. Keith?
Yes, Your Honor, this is, I believe, the third time in which it's come before you. We do this annually on completion of the 12th Jefferson Street Bridge replacement project a couple of years ago that then we became eligible again for state funds relative to bridge replacement. The South Clay Street Bridge is the next one from a condition standpoint that would be targeted for replacement. And every year, M dot selects those bridges that it feels are the highest priority. Municipalities apply. Those that aren't selected have to reapply the following year. So this is us reapplying for the, for what would be the next construction under the bridge program, which would be 2023. So we're three years out, but we apply now. One year would be engineering, the following year would be constructions. At some point, it will be selected, but we apply annually until so.
Okay, question for Keith?
How many times have you applied for this one?
I believe this is our third, this will be the third time since having completed South Jefferson. So this will be the third year that we will have applied to be considered for, for the bridge funds. The bridge program, just to note too, it's a it's a 90-foot split whereby the, the city would handle the engineering costs, but the actual construction cost, 90% M dot and 10% city, so we just we apply, try to get in their queue and then, and then once that is approved, that work would be done in a couple of years. This would be resolution number 20-13.
Any other questions? If not, we would look for a motion to adopt resolution 2013.
Move to adopt resolution 2013, Backwith?
Support, Mackin.
Okay, we have a motion and we have support. Would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
He's muted.
I saw yes. For House?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman? Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Councilmember Backwith?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Number 10 is a letter from Keith regarding Smith and North Monroe Street Road and Utility Improvement Bid Award. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. There are some projects that are allowed under the governor's order to proceed. This being an utility repair project specifically for Smith Street with repairs to the sanitary sewer and then also an upgrade to the, what is now currently a four-inch water main on North Monroe Street. So this would be the replacement of water main on North Monroe Street and the replacement of sewer main mystery. We received six bids. You have those before you. The lowest bid was Concord Excavating. They have done other work for the city. Three recent projects were treated and watermen over the last few years and they were all completed successfully and we believe that they've held up well. And and so we would ask for council approval to award the bid to Concord Excavating in the amount of $646,399.70. That's reflected in the approval of resolution number 20-14 that we're seeking your action on. And I believe one of the phone callers that you have and we have online is Jeff Brown with Fishback Engineering, who is our consulting engineer. If we did, if you do have any questions related to the nature of the project. Your packet has a map of the blocks that are intended to be built on. So this would be mystery east of Morse, almost all the way to Central Park Drive. And then North Monroe Street from US 12 to Rand Street.
Questions? Comments? If not, we would look for a motion to adopt or not adopt resolution 20-14.
Motion to adopt 2014, Knack.
Report, Petsko.
Okay, we have a motion and we have support. All in, all with the clerk, please take the vote. Break that habit.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
If I could read your lips, Randall, I think that was a yes, but you gotta turn on your video. You gotta unmute.
Thumbs up.
There I am. Sometimes, sometimes it locks in on on mute, so, but yes, I vote yes.
All right. Councilmember House?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Councilmember Backwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Number 11 is a letter from Megan regarding temporarily, temporary amendment of the nominating procedures for elected officials. Megan, you want to give a vote?
Sure. As you know, we will have, we have a deadline on April 21 at 4:00 PM for persons who wish to run for local office. And the only open local office at this November's election is the ward to council seat currently occupied by Chad Johnson. Either he or anyone else who would like to run for that needs to qualify by 4:00 PM on the 21st, which is only a week from tomorrow. Our charter requires that a candidate provide or submit to the clerk a nominating petition with at least 25 valid elector signature from that ward. The problem with that is, is that really the candidate has to provide more because the clerk often finds that there are some that are invalid in some way or other. And so in this time of social distancing and stay-at-home orders, we were trying very hard to come up with some way that would enable Mr. Johnson or any other candidate to qualify to run in November without going door to door. I know that many people don't answer their door to strangers at this time at all. So we, we have been watching the state to provide some kind of solution to this problem. And they really haven't. At a conference call this morning, the league suggested, someone from the league suggested that the candidate obtain a sufficient number of petitions from the clerk and mail them to each of the possible signatories who would then sign both as the nominator and as the person passing around the petition and then would mail those back to the clerk. Unfortunately, we really only have six business days to get this accomplished and it's getting pretty tight. The candidate could still go door to door and try to get the, the petition signed. I don't know if you'd leave it on the steps and, and walk away and let them come and sign, but rather than struggle with this, we were trying to come up with something that would step around the nominating requirement that is in our charter. In the Home Rule Cities Act says that cities may make any change in election law that even though that conflicts with their charter, as long as it doesn't, as long as it's consistent with state election law. So we've spent a lot of time looking for where the prohibition might be on hap- on a home rule city or any city allowing a nomination process without having the nominating signatures. And we think that what we've come up with between Susan and myself, our city clerk, Susan Heath and myself, is not in contravention of state law. But we're not 100% sure of that. We, we think that this should work particularly in light of the challenges that we're facing right now. And in light of the fact that we don't have a solution given to us by the state. So that's why we put together this temporary change to our candidate qualifying procedure that would allow the candidate to pay a fee and appear on the ballot. This would be applicable both to Chad Johnson and anybody else who might want to run from the second ward, run for the seat in the second ward. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Since this directly affects me, is this something that I can abstain from voting on?
If you're going to abstain, we, you have to make a motion to abstain and everyone has to vote on it. I think that's probably appropriate because you actually are the person who would be benefited by this being passed. So why don't we go ahead and do that?
Okay, you make a motion. Should one of us make a motion to allow him to abstain?
One of you has to make the motion.
We look for a motion to allow Chad.
I'll make the motion, allow Chad to abstain, that's Knack.
Support, Backwith.
Okay, we have a motion and support to add to allow Councilman Johnson to abstain on this upcoming vote. Would the clerk please take the vote on that?
Councilmember House?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin? Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Any other questions for Megan and I? Keith, can you make sure Don Reed gets this information and gets it in the paper so full disclosure to anyone else?
If I may?
Keith, you're muted.
If I may, Mayor?
You're still muted, Keith.
I believe Pat has to do it.
Okay.
So, yes, we can get that to the media, and then I also wanted to know, I wanted to pose to Sue or Megan, as it's my understanding that this method is also is available to other uh local units of a government. It just happens to be something that that isn't um specific to.
Keith, I can support that. That's an option for I S D board members.
And it's an option for township elections as well.
Okay.
And if I may?
Yeah.
My plan is if this is indeed adopted, is to have notice put in ASAP. I don't know if they can get something in tomorrow's paper, but probably by Wednesday or Thursday, something in the paper noting the this new option of next Tuesday, uh, April twenty-first at four P M.
Okay. So if we pass this, we'll do most of the full disclosure to the public, and uh we'll see what kind of stampede we get. But uh, any other questions for Megan on this present, or Emily?
Yes, um, two questions. The first, if this turns out to be not allowed, the individual that turned in um or to run, would that have any negative consequence on those individuals showing up on the ballot?
If the person who uses this procedure that we're proposing, say the question again. I I guess I didn't hear it all.
So um, you made the comment that you weren't a hundred percent sure if this would be allowed. So my question is, for anybody who ends up um turning in without any signatures, there's not going to be a negative consequence to them, as in they would not be allowed to be on the ballot is if this?
That's where my hesitation comes. Um, if I typically how these things come up is someone sues the candidate in Circuit Court, asking the court to order that the court, for the court to order that the person's name not appear on the ballot. Um, that did happen in Detroit, not in this context, in the context of whether or not Mayor Duggan had lived in the city of Detroit for a year, um, when he submitted his signature petitions, because they also require the signature petitions. And eventually, the court did rule that he could not because he hadn't lived in the city for a year. Now, this is a different situation. This is a question of of the paperwork, although the election commissions and and the state election uh commission is very rigid about the paperwork and and that things be done on time and done to the rules. But at the moment, we are facing a pandemic. This isn't convenience for anybody. This isn't applying to one candidate more than another. This this is wide open to anybody who would run from the second ward. Um, so I think that we're in a different situation.
Okay, then the the follow-up question is, um, if we choose not to approve this resolution and no one's able to file because they can't get the petition signature, what happens? Is it you vote by like a write-in name? Like, what happens with?
Yes, then we would be going to write-ins, and whoever got the that this puts a burden on the clerk, for one thing, because it means that she has to go through every single ballot. The the there won't be any automatic tallying of those ballots. She'll have to go through every single one of them, and it will be on the presidential election night. So um, that, you know, maybe you say, well, that's tough luck. You're the clerk, and you're gonna have to find twenty-eight hours in a twenty-four-hour day. Um, but, yes, the next step is write-ins, and the write-in with the most votes would be the winner.
The write-in has to announce two weeks before the election, get to Sue and let them know they want to be eligible for a write-in. Is that correct, Sue?
That's correct. Um, it's Fridays before the election. They have to file a affidavit of identity for a write-in.
And just to just to clarify a little bit, anybody who's interested in running on the second ward seat would be getting in contact with Sue in the next week to get nominating petition, at which time Sue would tell them, you don't have to get nominated petition, you can just file this affidavit. So nobody is gonna be denied that was going to run by the twenty-first. Nobody is gonna be denied that you have any disadvantage, I think.
That's correct.
That's correct. And no one so far has expressed an interest other than our our current person sitting on that seat, Mr. Johnson.
Right. So, any other questions for Megan or Sue?
Yeah, I've got one.
Done.
Um, yeah, you, did you say there was a fee involved in getting the affidavit?
Yes, when other um when townships and other governmental entities use this process, and it can be built in their charters, the the fee is always a hundred dollars. So we put that fee in our um resolution here.
Is that optional for us? What the fee is that's not mandated?
I just put a hundred dollars in there to be consistent with state law.
That was my question, too. Uh, that's not something that we do for the other positions in normal times.
That's correct.
So I didn't see, was this mandated, or is this necessary, or this was just status quo? If it's just status quo, I I'd probably like to make the recommendation that we don't add that fee. I I don't understand benefit other than if it's what everybody else does.
I do not remember there being a requirement that there be a hundred-dollar fee, Sue?
I I have no particular opinion on it. I do see how it might be good to let it go and not have that. However, I think any other form of filing that is not with a nominating petition for any other office in the state of Michigan is with a fee of one hundred dollars. Now, what does that hundred dollars go to? Could not tell you. Perhaps, perhaps in some areas, it's used.
Randall?
Um. Election cost, I don't know.
I I think at the county level, uh, that hundred dollars goes back to the winner of the election. So if Mr. Johnson wants to pay his hundred dollars and wins, he gets his money back. It's a lot like when you buy a pop.
Again, please.
I think that Randall is right.
I personally agree with Jim. I think a motion with eliminating the fee on this special circumstance would not be out of order, but that's just my opinion.
So just to be clear, this resolution only affects the upcoming election, nothing past that?
Correct.
Okay.
And I would move that we uh eliminate the fee for this election.
I'll second that.
Who and who?
Uh, Petsko.
Petsko and Knack, I believe, and you're you're making a motion to adopt resolution twenty dash fifteen without the hundred-dollar filing fee, is that correct?
Correct.
Knack, second.
Okay, everybody's on the same page? Okay, we have a motion, we have support. Would Sue please take the vote?
Councilmember Rissman?
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes. Uh, is this the one that I believe I was abstaining from?
Abstained.
Yes, abstain.
I I apologize.
Missed that.
Or Knack?
You're you're cutting out. Are you calling me?
Councilmember Knack, yes.
I vote yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried.
Excuse me, Councilmember House?
Yes.
Okay.
Ouch.
Uh, motion carried. Uh, we have a last spot on our agenda for public comments. Pat, do you see anybody calling in?
I don't have any callers right now. I will go ahead and uh throw this information back on the the screen, so the folks that are watching on YouTube know the time, or Channel sixty-one, we do that with both of them.
Chad, just so you're aware, Chad, we allow five minutes of public comments, and then with a with a vote of counsel, we can extend that, I believe, for an additional three minutes, Sue. But the second, the second three minutes.
It's two, it's ten minutes.
Two minutes, two minutes. So we allow five minutes. We allow that before and after the meeting, then it can be extended for an additional two, just FYI. There have been situations around the nation where people have called in uh from California or Texas into like meetings like ours and used profanity and racial slurs during the public comments. We're hoping that doesn't happen, but at this point, we'll probably just have to politely listen uh and ask them to refrain from the language, but we're hoping that doesn't happen. Uh, no public comment? I'm sorry.
While we're waiting, can I ask a question? The way that motion was uh that we just passed, was that a motion to eliminate the hundred dollars from the resolution? Do we still have to pass the resolution?
I know, he he made a motion to adopt resolution twenty fifteen without the hundred-dollar filing fee.
Megan, thank you.
Correct, John?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna go with no public comments here, and we'll move on to unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business? Um, I'm probably gonna misspeak here, Keith, but a little, I think, good news for council. I don't know, I seem to remember a few months ago from some correspondence, is Department of Transportation is moving up the bridge repair on US twelve out by the Willows. Is that what I remember reading?
Um, one communication that we received from them suggested that it might occur, but the most recent one said that it didn't get approved.
Okay.
It it doesn't mean that it still won't happen, um, but but at this point, they're not planning for it, though though next year we do have, they have scheduled the milling and repaving of US twelve from uh essentially from the bridge to all the way through town to Michigan Avenue. So that will still proceed, but the work on the bridge itself is a separate project and currently is not programmed for next year.
There was some correspondence about what type of bridge design we would like, pedestrian walkway on the north side, so that may or not be coming to us early at this point, correct?
Correct, but they did confirm with you and I that um they are working that into the bridge design.
But for Emily and Chad, we we took out that old deteriorating bridge at the Willows, and we're trying to work with the state to get a safe walkway on the north side of US twelve, so that's in the pipeline, just for your information. So uh, we thought it would move up, but apparently not. Any any unfinished business, Jimmy?
Uh, Your Honor, on that bridge, uh, a thought, I believe, we might just, it came up as a comment before, would be in their design, if it was at all possible, to have a crossing underneath that bridge, so anybody that wanted to utilize the park system could cross the highway there underneath the bridge.
Good question.
So it's on a, it's on a master plan for the city, but something to that effect would be at the city's expense. Um, nothing's been designed at this point to try to accommodate that. I mean, there, it's at a much greater expense than what we're talking about on the on the crossing above or or across the bridge itself. Um, so we've not talked about with M dot anything to that extent, no.
When that was, when when we discussed before, uh, the the other pedestrian bridge that we removed, when we removed the old twelve pavement and bridge crossing, uh, there was concern about uh people in wheelchairs and and elderly people that didn't move real quick, trying to cross over there to Rotary Park, uh, bicycles crossing over. Um, and it was just, it was basically just mentioned, but that's why I'm asking now, is that something that we could consider before the engineering commences, and that it's to, you know, it's even a greater expense to add it? Uh, I'd be curious to see what it costs. Uh, underneath there, people already walk across on the on the uh concrete that's laid down in there. Um, so when they're laying it out, if we could just put a a railed sidewalk across there wide enough uh for pedestrians to pass, that would make that a much safer intersection.
Yeah, I'd be interested in what that cost would be.
Okay.
Okay.
We we can engage our our fishback and and look into that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make another note, too, relative to that project, is that um that that is scheduled for, is currently scheduled for two thousand twenty-three. Their hope and our hope continues to be that they would um move that up a year or two, and that next year's project is is planned, so the repaving is planned, and we're trying to coordinate with them the um the inclusion of of any bridge work.
I'm sure the barrier freeness of that would come into play, might be an issue, but it's certainly something to look into.
Well, it could, as I envision it, it, you could do both. I mean, because it's gonna require a crossing still to get across the river, but you would have a corresponding sidewalk that would then go down the hill on the north side, and then go under the bridge and then come back up on the rotary side. So it could conceivably be two different projects. There's not gonna be a lot of duplication there.
Okay. Uh, any I, any other unfinished business for staff? Uh, any new business for council?
Um, I would just like Wes, at our next, we have Lisa to hide.
You're cutting out, Emily.
Sorry. Um, at our next city council meeting, would it be possible to have Lisa give some type of um presentation or update regarding uh support for our small businesses? Um, I read an article today, uh, you know, a lot of people are concerned with whether or not they will still survive on the pandemic, a lot of unknowns. So I would appreciate hearing an update from her about the support from the federal and state, and then if that's gonna be enough um to help all our small businesses survive, and if not, if there's a possibility um of maybe us at the local level creating some type of relief program if needed, um, I'd just like to hear some type of update.
Yeah, good question, dear. Or Audrey, either one of them who's more versed on. I know we helped do what, forty applications for the one first level of grants?
Right, the the state program that came out and and was turned around in forty-eight hours, and um there were nine in County one, um, and uh three, three businesses in Coldwater and a, in a essentially a business in each three or four, and then a business each in Union City, Quincy, and Bronson were approved for those uh in somewhere near five thousand dollars apiece, but they've not released who those are. Um, and that's just a one-time state state uh assistance.
Update would be a good idea, though. You could have one of those two do that. Any other new business at council level?
Your Honor, I I'd just like to, I'm sorry, was that some else? I'd just like to make a a general statement out to everybody. I want to thank all of our emergency personnel and essential workers that have been going to work every day and risking their lives and their family lives, and and the businesses that have stayed open to support not just our community, but also those workers. Unfortunately, I have heard of a few businesses that are refusing to serve certain individuals or house them based on relationship to their potential uh work environment and exposure to the COVID nineteen. But to those businesses, individuals, and charitable people that have been donating face masks to hospitals and and the uh elderly care centers, and the way our community and people have been pulling together, it's it's actually very impressive, and I'd like to send out a thank you to all those people, um, and ask them to continue to support each other and keep our conversations rational on social media and uh be, continue to be positive and work through this together as a community.
Well said. We all agree with that, and the same thing. We all agree with that. And same thing for the nursing home employees and medical and the corrections officers who are putting their lives at risk every day. We do, I think we all appreciate everybody's effort. Well said, Jimmy. Any other new business at council level? If not, we will see you folks in two weeks, meeting adjourned.
Sounds good.
Rebecca, you could go ahead and stop the transcribing service now.
Susan, I will get you updated resolution to match.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Safe.
Bye.
Bye.